Good morning. I'll be calling this regular meeting for March 11th, 2021 to order. If you could please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance and salute to the safe flag. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the invisible, perfect friendship among united cultures. Thank you, everyone. Moving on, we're going to go to next item, which is approval of the regular meeting agenda.
So will.
A second? Commissioner Brown, second motion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to the next item is Gila Regional Medical Center report. Mr. Landruck.
And good morning, Mr. Chair. I think we would like to kick off this morning with a presentation by our CFO. I will follow. One of the things that we do in our commissioners meeting is reiterate what has happened in the most recent board meeting or highlight that. So with that, I will ask our CFO to take the podium.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We tested this before the meeting, so we don't have a repeat of two weeks ago. Oh, I'm sorry. There we go. Okay, so I'm presenting to today the January results. And on our volume, we've had some pretty flat trends. The ED visits for January were 336 below plan for the month. And I did pass out copies of this, so that way everyone has. Thank you, Scott.
Our technology for hearing isn't the best. You gotta really get up to it.
Yeah, so here's some key metrics that I like to look at. On the year-to-date basis, our outpatient visit growth down 10%. A lot of that can be attributed to COVID. Same with our discharges and the ED is actually negative. The case mix index is really good at 1.32. Days cash on hands at 54. And then our length of stay at 2.9 is actually really good.
Greg, will you explain, for the benefit of the public, will you just briefly explain the case mix index, please?
So the case mix index is a measure of essentially how sick our patients are. And so if we were doing really complicated brain surgery, as you would see at a bigger hospital, it would be a two or maybe even a three. For a rural hospital to have a 1.32 is pretty good. Some of my past life, also in rural markets, you'll see like a 1.15 or a 1. Ultimately, it's an indicator of your reimbursement that you're getting. Being more complicated, more difficult procedures, you're going to get paid more.
And so is it fair to say that the case mix index could reflect the health of the community as well?
That probably wouldn't be fair.
Okay.
Because you still have those complicated patients in the community. But because of the specialties of our hospital, they're likely being transferred someplace else.
Thanks.
Yes.
What is one day's cash?
Commissioner Edwards also asked me that question. I can get you the exact number. I don't want to guess wrong. I have a number in my head, but I don't want to guess wrong, so I can get you that exact number. In essence, it's the spend of the hospital over one day. But the actual value of that, I'll have to get that back to you.
Okay.
Any other questions?
So I'm going to have one more question when you head to the financial summary page, so I'll ask it now and you can explain it when you get to that page.
Okay.
I think it would also be helpful to remind the public just a basic explanation of why we look at EBITDA.
Right, okay. So, and that's where, for the month of January, we were behind in what we had budgeted in EBITDA. A lot of that's related to the timing of when our special programs that I think I discussed last month were happening. We were conservative in the budget, delayed it till January. They happened in December, so that was actually a good thing. And that's where the year-to-date basis is kind of more meaningful. We're still behind budget, but less significantly. $375,000 behind budget year-to-date. EBITDA is, in essence, a measurement of the operations of the hospital regardless of who owns it because of the capital structure. And so you can fairly compare two businesses regardless of how they're owned, how they're operated, based on EBITDA. It's a common metric. Any other questions? On a year-to-date basis, we're also ahead of revenue versus plan. Any other questions?
Questions?
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good morning again, Mr. Chair and other commissioners. As we said, one of the things that we're doing when we meet with the commissioners is to reiterate, if you will, what has happened at our last board meeting for the sake of the public. One of the things that has, seems to continually come up, and I just want to kind of clear the air on it, is that we've been having a lot of questions. I know several of you commissioners have been having questions about why our helicopter is so busy. Well, a lot of reasons. It is not because we are continually transferring patients out, although that is one of the functions of what we do. The helicopter is based at Gila, and so sometimes the helicopter leaves our hospital empty. And I know it goes over the neighborhoods and we've had people say, so do you just transfer everybody out that comes in? No, absolutely not, you know? And we've also had people that have said, well, now that you're critical access, are you no longer taking care of patients? Absolutely not. We're doing the same amount of business, pretty much, given the effects of COVID that we've always done. We are a critical access hospital. I've referred to it before on steroids in that we are one of the busiest, most sophisticated critical access hospitals around. We are 80% outpatient. You know, we had a day last week that we had, and most of that is surgery, cardiac procedures, et cetera, et cetera, cancer center procedures. We had a day last week where we had a very low census in the hospital. We still had several couplets, which is a baby and mama, in the hospital. But we had run all week doing surgeries that, since we're still under essential surgeries, that qualified for that, so we had a busy, busy week. But what is typically transferred out via helicopter is that if you have a heart patient come in, we have a very fine cardiologist in Dr. Ratliff. But if it takes an interventional heart procedure, many of those are transferred out, such as a stent or open heart, things like that. We have trauma. We are a level four trauma center. And that means that we have trauma coming into our hospital. We have a full-time hospitalist group, which are physicians that take care of patients while they're in the hospital. And we have a full-time ER group. We're covered 24/7 with either one of those in the hospital. And so cardiac is transferred out some. If it's neurology, if it is neurology, if it is a brain injury, something like that, most of those would probably go to Albuquerque or potentially El Paso. But it is really a misnomer to say that you see a lot of helicopter traffic and that are you transferring everything out? Absolutely not. We are a very sophisticated hospital and we only transfer out those patients that we are not able to take care of. For instance, in this environment, I would say that most of the citizens of Silver City are very lucky and they've got a hospital here that is close. And let's just say you have a heart attack, okay? Get you to the hospital quickly, give you something to stop the heart attack, and many times transfer you out for tertiary care. But that's what happens. And so I just want to put to bed this misnomer that seems to be prevalent in this community that because we see a lot of helicopter traffic, we're transferring patients out. No, we are a very busy, sophisticated hospital. You've got native air there on your campus. And the more you see that helicopter going out, that means that we're taking care of patients that are very, very sick, okay? So I just wanted to open with that, if that's all right. One of the things that I will do is I'll just simply go over the agenda if I can and just kind of highlight for the group, for those listening, what we typically do. Our agenda, of course, at many times begins with an executive session. We have a chief of staff report. Chief of staff is Dr. Robinson, and he comes on online and gives the chief of staff report. Then we have the CFO report, which you heard today, then the CNO report. Our chief nursing officer is always in the meetings. She many times takes the podium and talks about all of the things that are going on in nursing. Compliance officer. Our compliance officer, I believe, was at the last one. She is required to go to several of the meetings. Compliance officer is someone that has a dotted line to the board, so ever so often they are supposed to report directly to the board. I think we're going to be adding a legal report and a patient liaison report. We have a very fine patient liaison. And what that is, if you have a complaint within the hospital, they're the ones that gets to the bottom of it, calls the patient, fixes it, et cetera, et cetera. And then one of the things we're also going to be adding is a personnel report. I think our chief, our director of HR will be at the next meeting and they'll be talking about folks, areas that we're recruiting in, areas that we have shortages. At the last meeting, we get over into the bulk of it, and then there are certain things that the board itself has to approve. We had, I think we had some amendments to physician contracts at the last one. We had consideration of our clinical database, which was changing in the way we do it. We had consideration of our PET scan. You know, we do have a mobile PET scan that comes into this community, and a PET scan is something that you treat cancer with. They go in and they approve medical staff credentialing reports, et cetera, et cetera. So there are certain things that have to come to the board. You know, per the HealthTech contract, and there's always a HealthTech management report, I have the ability to approve up to $50,000, and the CFO has the ability to approve up to $25,000. So all of those other things beyond that have to come to the board. We have, they go through what we call contracts, they adhere to county procurement code, and so these are the things that are presented at the end of our meeting. At our last meeting, on my verbal report, I talked about, if you look at our website, we have a lot of positions posted that we are seeking. And a lot of people said, well, do you keep that up? Is that current? You have a lot of people on that, and I think sometimes we've had as many as 90 people which would run the gamut on that. And that would, not people, but positions. And yes, it is reviewed every day, and that's what we told the board the other day. Our org chart is changing. It changes. That's something when joint commission shows up and joint commission is, they say TJC, the joint commission, but this joint commission on healthcare accreditation, they are the best, and that's what we do here at Gila. When they come in, they want to see what the org chart looks like. And ours kind of changes daily. We are sophisticated enough and have enough people, enough turnover, enough of reassignment of tasks that many times I can do the org chart today, and by next Monday, it will be outdated. Now that COVID is, and I'm not going to say we're coming up from under COVID, you know, we're all still masked in this building today, although the state that I'm from, or the state, I'm from Kentucky, the state I live in, Texas, discontinued all that yesterday. And I think that's sort of foolhardy, but anyway. We still have only two entrances into our hospital open, and we have very limited visitation. We are looking at if there needs to be visitation, if it's a patient that's very, very ill or somebody that needs to be accompanied, we are beginning to look at that. I think most institutions have now relaxed the temperature taking as you come in for employees. For the outside, we still take temps. But Kelly and I, our chief nursing officer, are rounding at least once a week. And we're looking at areas in the hospital that need some attention, and we are paying a lot of attention to that. Areas that we're in the process of upgrading, for instance, I think MedSearch 2, I think they call it, in the hospital has, still has carpet in it. Well, hospitals are getting away from putting any carpet anymore. They just don't do it. It used to be years ago. People wanted carpet in hospitals because it was quieter, it was better for the patients to sleep. But carpet is something that infection control will tell you, you just absolutely do not want. So we're taking it a section at a time. We're taking it out. We're putting in laminate flooring like every other hospital in the world is using. And so we're going through the hospital as we can and as cash will allow to fix that. And we have that going on right now in MedSearch 2. We are, one of the things too, that has been coming up a lot lately, which I'll just go ahead and touch on, is if we're able to take care of VA patients. We're very close. I met with our contracts person last night, Tammy Bates, and there is, it's one of those things, the federal government allowed all of those contracts to sunset. And so there is, and so we've had to reapply. Ours has been in since, I think, February the 15th, and it is sitting there waiting on what could be as much as a 20-day. We are looking at, we're making phone calls every day. I know that Melanie Goodman, the person that represents Senator Lupin, has been helping us, and it's one of those things that we think we're very close to getting to where, in fact, we had a patient yesterday that presented, that is a VA patient and is going to be a long-term patient to take care of, and they're VA. And so we're making phone calls on that. We need to get this patient started. We need to get them taken care of. Finally, I looked yesterday at the letters that had been prepared by council that are going out to the previous group that provided cancer services at our hospital and the current one now. We've made some requests. We have some requirements that will have to be changed on their current offering, and we thought, in doing our due diligence, it was only appropriate to talk to Dr. McInnes' group. I did have a long conversation with her, I remember, last Halloween because she told me what she dressed up as on Halloween. And we have, sending out letters basically to ask for an RFI from them or request for information on how we might be willing to go forward. But I think what we're going to do, the contract allows for it, is we're going to continue with our current group. We're going to go on a year-to-year basis. And we've reminded them that they have some changes they need to make, which is with regard to providing better patient care. And so those were approved yesterday. I'll be signing those today, and we'll be getting those out. That concluded pretty much what my report was. I can tell you that as the CEO, I spent a lot of time with the medical staff. You know, I had a medical exec committee yesterday morning. I had peer review the night before. You know, our medical staff is very involved in what we're doing. As a matter of fact, at the last board meeting, it was distributed to all of these board, up to all of our governing board members, a state-of-the-state, if you will, on what has happened since HealthTech got involved with it. And so I talked to my boss yesterday. And I distributed that same report to the medical exec committee, who were saying, could you catch us up on what's going on? So they're very much involved. I believe the plan probably is to bring chief of staff as ex officio, which means onto the board, but not as a voting member. And so I think that's in process. I will remind everyone that you have to be careful in a hospital because your physicians are customers too, okay? They are your first customer. They're the ones that takes care of the patient and brings the patients in. So we do everything that we can to accommodate our physicians, to keep them in the know, to make their delivery of care just as efficient as is possible. And so that's, we've, I've always been a big proponent of understanding the physician customer, and that very much is prevalent at our hospital, and we take care of them so they can bring our patients in and take good care of them. With that, I will stop, and I'm open to questions if there's any that I can answer.
Thank you. No questions. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
So moving on to the next item of the agenda, proclamations under A. It's a proclamation, consideration of proclamation and recognition and celebration of a collaborative community effort undertaken to protect our economy, natural resources, and way of life from Holloman Expanded F-16 Training Aerospace Proposal. Commissioner Edwards.
Could have made her say it.
Yeah, I could have, but.
So the proclamation reads, "In recognition and celebration of the collaborative community effort undertaken to protect our economy, natural resources, and way of life from the Holloman Expanded F-16 Training Aerospace Proposal. Whereas we value the diverse opinions and philosophies of people across our communities and county, we also recognize our common values can bring us together to protect the varied ways of life of all residents in Grant County that all residents in Grant County cherish. And whereas an unprecedented number of residents from all walks of life and political persuasions were galvanized to action, which resulted in dozens of meetings with Air Force and other government officials, over 2,500 public comments, a petition signed by 150 local businesses, and a bipartisan unanimous resolution from the Grant County Commission, and resolutions from other local governments opposed to the expansion of airspace for F-16 pilot training over the Gila region because of the negative impact both economic and ecological the flyovers would have on our area. And whereas we recognize that military training is essential yet should not happen in areas that pose a significant threat to public safety, the local economy, or federally and state-protected lands. And whereas the United States Air Force and other Department of Defense officials took the concerns of Grant County residents and many others into consideration when selecting alternative one as their preferred alternative, and determining that the expansion of F-16 Training Aerospace over Grant, Catron, Socorro, and Sierra Counties would negatively impact our communities, public lands, and the local economy. And whereas we recognize and appreciate the hundreds of individuals, organizations, businesses, and elected officials that spent a great deal of time, effort, energy participating in the very processes that local, state, and the federal government use to determine what our future will look like. And whereas the meaning of civic engagement is to consciously engage in the whole fabric of one's community through means both political and nonpolitical in order to make a positive and meaningful impact on the lives of one's family, friends, and neighbors despite the differences which may otherwise divide us. Now therefore, the Grant County Board of Commissioners do hereby recognize and celebrate the success of local civic engagement resulting in a positive outcome for Silver City, Grant County, and the greater Gila Bioregion, and proclaim today, March 11th, 2021, as Celebrate Civic Engagement Day." Do I read the in-witness thereof? We have here on two, set our hands, and the seal of the county of Grant to be affixed in Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico, this 11th day of March 2021.
Thank you, Commissioner.
So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this proclamation.
Second motion? Commissioner, motion by Commissioner Edwards, second by Commissioner Brown. Discussion? See none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next item of the agenda is public input during this portion of our meeting. We welcome your suggestions and want to hear your concerns. This is not a question-and-answer period. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. Any individual who'd like to discuss items in more depth may request to be placed on a future agenda. Request forms are available in the county manager's office. Due to the coronavirus, public input will be accepted via Zoom and is, as indicated in our legal notice, participants are required to register no later than one hour prior to the meeting using the provided link. Public input?
Yes, okay, so we will get started. Glenn Griffin, you have been unmuted.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am Glenn Griffin, resident of Mission District 4. I support Commissioner Edwards' proclamation. She was a fantastic endeavor by Silver City, Grant County resident. I thank Commissioner Edwards for pedaling her mountain bike, carrying our numerous signed petitions all the way to the Holloman Air Force Base, Comanants House in El Magordo. I fully support her proclamation to celebrate our collaborative efforts to protect our homes and our wilderness areas from the M-16. Good job. Second, I am in full support of Commissioner Brown's resolution, R2118, in support of HB200. Let's try the remaining diversion funding from the unelected and self-appointed white male hands on the CAP board that do not represent southwest New Mexico residents' needs. Silver City has some $10 million in water infrastructure needs right now. Hurley needs to work in well. Hanover has well problems. Take the funding away from CAP. They do not represent our community's needs. They have wasted millions, some $15 million, in legal fees, salaries, and studies with nothing to show. Their ineptness cost us $50 million and lost federal water dollars. With 450 recently laid off and terminated miners, putting the remaining $80 million on the ground will create local needed jobs. Commissioners, do not be swayed by Chevron's 2020 oil money pouring into southwest New Mexico politics. From our New Mexico Secretary of State's website, it's Senator Diamond, $25,700; Representative Switzer, $16,400; Dow, $15,350; Armstrong, $11,600; Carazas, $5,800. The only stall owner, as the Silver City Daily Press puts it, that isn't dirty, is Senator Zaya Correa-Hempfield. She took none of Chevron's oil money. Commissioners, vote for your constituents that cannot afford thousands of dollars in additional property tax increases to pay for the diversion. We need the money. From Reserve to Lord'sburg, our commissioners, voting as a block, will send a clear message to our soon-to-be-voting state senators. Together, constituents and commissioners, we can collectively do good for our community again, just like we did on M-16. Yes on resolution, R2118, please. One last request. Please raise your hands, commissioners, when you vote. The audit is horrible. Thank you. I'm Glenn Griffin, Silver City resident, Commission District 4 resident.
Thank you.
Francis Gonzalez, you have been unmuted.
Okay, you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, commissioners, and good morning, Chairman Ponse and board and the folks that helped us to get all the emails on to public comment. Thank you so much. Anyway, my name is Francis Gonzalez. I am from Mayor, from Kami Commission District 2 with Habeet Salas District. And I am from the mining district and have been born and raised here and have seen a lot of... and have seen a lot of these issues as well as I am also tribal. I am also Chiracara, Moore Springs Apache. And our folks have not had a seat at this table. One of the more important things is that with passing HB 200, which totally support County Commissioner Harry Brown and appreciative for him bringing this forward, is that the, one of the important things about this bill that's currently in the legislature that I think that's important for the commissioners to pass is that it has a way more, a diverse board, meaning experience, different people from different experiences on the board, ranchers, farmers, hydrologists. Also, it has people from the southwest and folks on the board. And most importantly, our tribal folks get a seat at the table, which needs to happen since we live here and we experience and we already know what is going on. The next thing that's really important for this bill also is that this bill offers the board to actually look at the needs of the communities that's coming in and prioritize where this is going to go. And then thirdly, what's really important is the municipalities that need this money right now. As Mr. Griffin brought up, the municipality of Hurley is definitely in need of that well dug and their money, to get money, to get all this done. It's a municipality that is in a lower economic status. And it's going to be costly to get that done, especially since it doesn't, we don't know how much longer the mine's going to be able to provide them water. Secondly, as Bayard, we do have a water treatment plant. And we are in need of a dryer and different beds. We're going to need to keep it updated and upgraded as, as time goes on. Silver City has needs with their piping issues for their water. Santa Clara has water issues as well as Hanover. That Bayard's been giving Hanover water for quite some time now. So there's different issues along with our other quant municipalities of, of Quatero County. Then you look at Hidalgo, Luna, and then of course ourselves. It's really important that the board really take a serious look at this to approve it because it does affect our community. Our folks do not want this. We need to divest from it. We need to finally let the CAP entity know that they don't have a say. They are not part of, they are consultants. They were never supposed to be making decisions. So at this point, I would say I do support HB 200. And again, I thank Commissioner Harry Brown for his work on this and for being our subject matter expert on this area. I also just want to say very quickly that thank you so much to Alicia Edwards, our Commissioner Edwards, for all the work she did with the F-16, us in the municipalities that supported it as well. Bayard, Santa Clara, and Hurley unanimously supported it as well. I want to thank them as well. The county commissioners, all of you. And again, thank you, Commissioner Edwards, for bringing this up along with the many folks that did it that worked so hard on getting this passed. So thank you very much and have a blessed day at home. Bye.
Thank you.
Allison Suick, you have been unmuted.
Good morning, Chairman Ponse and members of the commission. I'm Allison Civic Executive Director of the Gila Conservation Coalition. I'm also a constituent of District Five. And thank you for the opportunity to make public comment this morning. And I also would like to thank Commissioner Brown for bringing Resolution R-2118 forward today. And as you all know, the Interstate Stream Commission defunded the Gila diversion planning process last June. And that effort with the Bureau of Reclamation has been officially terminated. And we now have an opportunity to put the $80 million remaining in the New Mexico Unit Fund, put that to work for our communities in southwestern New Mexico. And Resolution R-2118 supports HB 200 and fast-tracking New Mexico Unit funding to priority water projects that will create long-term water security and jobs in southwestern New Mexico. And how does it do this? It does it by designating the Water Trust Board as the entity to advise the ISC on how to allocate that funding to water projects in the four county area. And in case you're not familiar with the Water Trust Board, this is a diverse 16-member board that recommends to the legislature projects for funding through the Water Project Fund. And the vast majority of the state's water projects go through the board's vetting process to ensure that they are technically sound and financed properly. And so as has been mentioned, the board has the technical expertise and the organizational infrastructure already in place to rapidly and efficiently advise the ISC on water projects in southwestern New Mexico that should be funded with the New Mexico Unit Fund. And some of our local communities are already familiar with the Water Trust Board. So of the $39.4 million in projects recommended by the Water Trust Board last year, 1.3 million of that was recommended for two projects in the four county area. The Village of Columbus for flood control on the border and the City of Demme for a preliminary engineering report for their wastewater facility reuse system. Now, we recognize that local entities may still need technical assistance and planning support. So we strongly support the ISC allocating funding to assist entities with project development and funding requests. And, you know, we're glad to see that these ideas are included in the resolution. So it's essential that communities in Grant County, as well as irrigators, and I want to emphasize as well as irrigators, get immediate access to funding for their existing and long-term water needs. And we believe that this resolution outlines a positive vision for how we can move forward with creating a fair and equitable process that builds water supply security for everyone in southwestern New Mexico. So on behalf of the Gila Conservation Coalition, we hope that you'll vote to support Resolution 2118. And I just want to close as well with saying thank you so much to the commission. I want to reiterate previous comments. Thanks so much to the Grant County Commission for all of its support on the Holloman issue. And I strongly endorse and support the proclamation. And thank you to Commissioner Edwards for bringing that forward this morning. And thank you for the opportunity to comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Janet Wollert Ortiz, you have been unmuted.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning, Chairman, Grant County Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Janet Wollert Ortiz. And I am in complete support of Commissioner Edwards' proclamation in recognition and celebration of collaborative community effort. So let's do it again with HB 200. I urge the complete support also of Commissioner Brown's Resolution 2118, supporting HB 200, which was just passed by the Senate Conservation Committee, as it would speed funding of $80 million to southwest water projects so desperately needed for thousands in our four county area. You all know the troubles our area is experienced now, is experiencing now in terms of water security. Just this morning, I spoke to Priscilla Lucero about the estimated 12 million in funding needed for the ongoing Grant County Regional Water Project. She also says there's tons more money that will be needed for, for our water source protection, drought mitigation, and so on. The additional funding, now waiting approval for a third well in the Hurley project, is an issue. The need to help farmers pay for the latest water conservation technology, and so on. You know too, that the total estimated need for various water projects currently sits at about $137 million. You know that that $80 million left in the AWSA fund would go a long way to satisfying more than half of this need. You also know that 450 unemployed miners and others would be happy to be hired to help work on these non-diversion water projects. This is a tremendous opportunity for jobs and economic revival in our area. The need for you to support this resolution is crystal clear to those of us who have literally spent thousands of hours and meetings with the ISC in the last decade and with the New Mexico CAP entity in recent years. We witnessed time and again the lack of expertise, lack of diversity of stakeholders, lack of organization, and blatant bias against fully funding non-diversion water projects. Right now, the remaining $80 million, what is left after squandering $15 million, is effectively being held hostage by the New Mexico CAP entity whose members are vocal about clinging to a mirage. Bottom line is that right now there are many shovel-ready non-diversion water projects with authentic planning and designs complete. And coincidentally, these projects are based in rational factual reality that are stalled or languishing for lack of funds while grant writers furiously try to come up with monies needed. The truth is that the narrow-mindedness of a local group has wasted time and tons of money and has produced nothing. When a local body becomes so incestuous as to ignore the needs of thousands for the benefit of a few, it is time to look elsewhere for real expertise. Hearings on HB 200 made it clear that the governor can appoint knowledgeable experts from the southwest to sit on the Water Trust Board. Arguing that the New Mexico CAP should hold the purse strings for the non-diversion projects is like kissing the bride to $80 million that could be put on the ground immediately to help our suffering communities. When the local body is not helping the majority of the locals and when that same local body lost $56 million in free federal money due to their own failures and incompetence, they need to be relieved of their duties. How much longer will we allow the CAP entity members who have abused public trust stand in the way of transformational change in water planning? We are in a time of crisis. The pandemic, the drought, climate emergencies, unemployed miners, and deteriorating water infrastructure. We need that money now. As many of us see it, you both have, you all have the power and the obligation to send a strong message to New Mexico legislators.
You have one.
HB 200 is enough wasting time and money bill. It needs to be pushed through for the benefits of the four county area. Thank you so much. And thank you, Commissioner Edwards and Commissioner Brown for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
I think it's important to note for the record that Taysha is calling people to speak in the order that they registered to speak.
Okay.
That's it.
Thanks, Taysha. Thank you.
Carol Anne, you have been unmuted.
Hello and thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Carol Anne Figali, and I'm a longtime resident of the Silver City area. Thank you, Commissioner Brown, for bringing forth R-2118 that supports HB 200. I reiterate what previous speakers have said before me and agree with them fully, so I will be brief. Now is the time to put New Mexico Unit Funds to work for our communities. This money is needed now for creating jobs and for water security. And this is the fair and just way to distribute these funds. Thank you so much, Commissioner Brown, for all of your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Donna Stevens, you have been unmuted.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Donna Stevens, Stevens, and I'm the Executive Director of the Upper Gila Watershed Alliance, a watershed protection nonprofit based in the Cliff Gila Valley in Silver City. On behalf of our 300 members, I want to express our strong support for House Bill 200 and Resolution R-2118 for the reasons listed by Allison Civic and others. It's past time for us to quit wasting money and time and to use the $80 million remaining in the New Mexico Unit Fund for worthy projects, currently totaling more than $137 million, to provide water security for southwest New Mexico residents. Also, I'd like to thank Commissioner Edwards for the Holloman proclamation. Thank you, Commissioner Brown, for Resolution R-2118, and to all of you Commissioners for your service to Grant County. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Joel Davis, you have been unmuted.
Good morning, Chairman Ponse and members of the committee, of the commission. My name is Joel Davis, and I represent the Fort Sill Apache Tribe, federally recognized tribe and sole successors and interest to their ancestors with Chiracara, Moore Springs Apaches. The Fort Sill Apaches are the federally recognized tribe and ancestors of Chief Mingus Colorado, Chief Loco, Chief Cochise, Chief Victoria Lozen, Terronimo, and other well-known historical figures. The Gila River and its headwaters hold ancestral and spiritual significance for the Fort Sill Apache tribe. The tribe's sole federal Indian reservation is located nearby at Akila, New Mexico. The first since Terronimo's ban was captured and the entire tribe of men, women, and children were removed from the area and held as prisoners of war for 28 years. The Gila sacred land and flowing waters preserve ancient artifacts and significant historical cultural sites that members regularly visit for ceremonial activities and historical connection. Engraving the Gila's rocky landscape is the history of our country dating back to the early 1300s. And as we work to revitalize and preserve southwestern New Mexico's cultural heritage while advancing economic opportunities for future generation, it is Fort Sill Apache's moral responsibility to support balanced solutions to water supplies for urban and rural communities that protect these sacred landscapes. As a result, Fort Sill Apache has expended considerable resources locally, statewide, and federally over the past decade to conserve the Gila's region's significant historic cultural sites and resources. For those reasons, the Fort Sill Apache tribe supports HB 200 to help allocate funds in a more efficient manner to the region for water conservation purposes under the Arizona Water Settlement Act and to ensure tribal representation and the distribution of those funds, which is severely lacking right now. Therefore, the Fort Sill Apache tribe urges you to support HB 200. Thank you for the opportunity to comment and for your time and consideration on this matter, Commissioners.
Thank you. Thank you.
Andy Payne, you have been unmuted.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman Ponse and Commissioners. My name is Andy Payne, and I'm living in District One in Grant County. And I'm here to ask you to support R-2118, which supports HB 200 now before the state senate. HB 200 will expedite the construction of long-delayed and needed water projects in our four county region. And it will establish Water Trust Board to advise Interstate, Interstate Stream Commission on these projects. And I am confident with $80 million of construction projects going on in our area, the governor will appoint more new members to the Water Trust Board from our region. I've watched the functioning of the CAP entity here in Silver City closely since it was formed seven years ago. And I personally attended some of their meetings. I concluded that they are not the best agency to manage public funds. After years of wasted time, they have nothing to show for their efforts. And we have nothing to show for the millions of dollars that they spent. With those appalling results, I concluded, as I think most reasonable people would, that the CAP entity should not be entrusted to manage the remaining $80 million. And in addition, I fear the CAP entity would be reluctant and slow to release these funds to other projects with the hope that somehow, someday, some way, they will again be able to access those funds for their own pet project, the Beringa River, which has been proven to be unworkable. In other words, they have a conflict of interest. In contrast, the Water Trust Board will be objective and has the broad representation, experience, and expertise to fairly and quickly distribute funds to worthy water projects. So I urge you to please support R-2118. can go into other more important things and more helpful things like water improvement and water security. So, okay, that's pretty much what I want to say. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Nathan Newcomer, you have been unmuted.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Nathan Newcomer, and I'm the Hila Graffs' organizer for New Mexico Wild, based here in Silver City. As a resident and landowner in Grant County, I come before you today to lend our organization's full support for the resolution put forth by Commissioner Brown, a resolution that seeks to support House Bill 200 in the Mexico State Legislature. Given both the economic crisis and climate crisis we face, our organization believes it is vitally important to get this money away from the New Mexico CAP entity and out to our local communities to build critical water infrastructure projects that are shovel-ready. Not only will House Bill 200 work to create local jobs here in Grant County, it will also enable our small towns and villages, such as Bayard, Hurley, Hanover, and many others, the ability to access 80 million dollars that have been held hostage by the New Mexico CAP entity for years. The fiscal mismanagement of the New Mexico Unit Fund has prevented our small towns and villages from accessing these critically important dollars, and it's time to move on. The people of Grant County deserve responsibility, and we need professional and competent Water Trust Board to make recommendations without risk of conflict of interest and to benefit all of southwestern New Mexico. Our communities need this resolution to ensure that the people in Santa Fe understand the local needs as it pertains to House Bill 200. New Mexico Wild very much appreciates the thoughtfulness that the sponsor Commissioner Brown and Chairman Ponse and the other Commissioners are bringing to this discussion. We wholeheartedly support efforts to ensure southwest representation on the Water Trust Board, to ensure that the application process is fair and accessible as possible, and the need for technical assistance to ensure that smaller entities and communities have the ability to compete for resources. We think that this resolution is the best way for Grant County to get those concerns on the record and to offer suggestions for ways to get the funding out as quickly as possible. I thank you very much for your time and consideration this morning, and urge a yes's vote on Commissioner Brown's resolution and support of House Bill 200.
Thank you.
Anthony Gutierrez, you've been unmuted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to actually speak pretty much like this, still a lone wolf on this in opposition to Resolution R 2118, and I wanted to give a little bit of background by here today. And I'm not necessarily here today to dispute the fact that the money that is in the New Mexico Unit Fund could be used for local projects. I'm in complete and total agreement, and I think that the actions of our Board will tell you that those are the sentiments of the majority of our Board as well. However, we have a partisan bill that's been pushed through the legislature from legislators mostly from Albuquerque and Las Cruces. If you speak with our locally elected officials, you find a lack of support, not necessarily for utilizing the New Mexico Unit Fund, but for the language in the bill that removes the regional input from the allocation process. And if you take a look at the bill, and in our, in some, a lot of discussion that says, well, ultimately Interstate Stream Commission has the ability to fund the projects, and potentially the region could put in their input into the ISC, and therefore that's how they would participate. However, the bill has specific language in it that says the Water Trust Board would now be the successor to the Southwest Water Study Group, and which is, which actually removes a lot of the language of the actual AWSA. In addition, the ISC, who's ultimately left in making decisions on how these potential projects will be funded, also has provided analysis of HB 200 and indeed recognizes the New Mexico CAP entity as successor for the Southwest New Mexico Water Study Group. So there's already a conflict with the agency that is supposed to provide for these, for these projects. I also would like to speak a little bit about the other portion of the Water Trust Board. And in the Resolution 2118, it says, the resolution is to expedite the use of funds. And so because I've got experience working with the Water Trust Board, it does however seem to be in conflict with the procedures from the Water Trust Board. If you have any experience, and I know that there's been a lot of testimony today that said, well, you know, it's the best way to have any experience whatsoever in trying to get the funds out of the Water Trust Board, you wouldn't know that it's all but speedy and expedite. I'd also like to refer to the resolution itself, and there are several parts of this resolution that I feel are a little troublesome. And I think that, number one, it says nearly 50 million dollars from the New Mexico Unit Fund has been spent in pursuit of a new New Mexico unit. That's not, that's not necessarily true. While a portion has been used, a big portion of the New Mexico Unit Fund was spent before the New Mexico Interstate Stream Commission ever provided any input into whether or not to pursue a New Mexico unit. That was, that was not done until November of 2014, in the last month, with pretty much a last second decision. So all of this testimony that says we've wasted all these years and all of this money is completely and totally incorrect.
You have less than a minute.
Mr. Chairman, the last thing I think I'd like to touch on is that the last sentence in the now, therefore, the four county Commissioners of Grant County, they're with files that it would be appropriate for the Interstate Fincherion to consult with New Mexico CAP entity. The Interstate Stream Commission has consulted with New Mexico CAP on both unit and non-unit projects. All of the non-unit projects that were funded preliminarily by the ISC were in consultation with the Hila San Francisco Water Commission, which was then, the same members became the New Mexico CAP entity.
Thank you, sir.
I've never heard in like 20 years experience.
Mr. Davis, your thumbs up, sorry. No more public input?
Mr. Chair, I have one.
Commissioner Burns, what did you say?
I have one that the city manager from Deming asked me to read.
Okay.
Thank you. This is addressed from Aaron Senna, city manager of Deming. He's also a chair of the Southwest Region Council of Governments. He sent this, and you have, I think the Commissioners have a copy of it. And he asked me, in the interest of his duties at work today, if I could read this for him. I asked Chairman Ponse if that would be acceptable. It says, "Grant County Commissioners, dear Chairman Ponse, it's my understanding that a resolution in support of HB 200 is being considered by the Grant County Commission on March 11th, 2021. The city of Deming passed a resolution opposing the legislation since it would remove regional and local representation on how the New Mexico Unit Fund is allocated for our local projects. In addition, the city hires consultants to apply for Water Trust Board funding due to the complexity of the application. It's an expensive process for us and often takes several years to be funded. Our governing body agreed that smaller water associations do not have the same capability of larger local government entities and wanted to ensure we all work together towards our water needs. The city of Deming has been a member of the Southwest Water Study Group and its successors all the way to its membership with the New Mexico CAP entity because it truly represents our region. While I understand that not all the entities in the region are current members of the New Mexico CAP entity, they have, however, been part of the decision-making process until a joint powers agreement was formed. House Bill 200 reestablishes the successorship, not by its representation of any regional entity, but solely by utilizing partisan legislative action. Secondly, I have real concern on the political and bureaucratic process of the Water Trust Board. This prevents the smaller communities from competing for infrastructure dollars with larger municipalities. While I represent the city of Deming, I also understand the importance of our regional partners and how it potentially offers, sorry, how it potentially affects our area. It is also my experience that southwest New Mexico is not represented on the Water Trust Board, and there is potential for changes in policy since the Water Trust Board is mostly appointed by the Governor. For these reasons, I'm asking that you reconsider supporting HB 200 and remain a vital partner in our water needs through the four county region. Respectfully submitted, Aaron Senna."
Thank you, Commissioner Billings. That concludes public input. I'd like to take a five-minute recess. I'll call this meeting back to order. Next item on the agenda is elected official reports. Sheriff Gomez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Commissioners. I'd like to start with just a summary for the month of February at the Sheriff's Office. In regards to training, the Sheriff's Office continues to seek advanced training in Crisis Intervention, CIT, including peer-to-peer interacting with persons with mental health issues, general intervention with members of the public, resource referrals, hostage critical incident negotiations. We hope to develop a comprehensive framework in coming months for your consideration. Having the trained personnel in place with support resources prior to a rollout is imperative. We have made good progress. The Sheriff's Office is currently planning the state-mandated in-house biannual training plan for the current cycle, a two-year cycle. We will be introducing the CIT to this training. Although not required by the state, I feel it is utmost importance for our entire staff. Corporal Jesus Palacio has recently provided an active shooter critical incident training for Cavalry Christian Academy, in which the staff were given current and relevant instructions on the subject. They also participated in several senior-based exercises. Corporal Palacio is currently planning similar training at the request of Cliff Schools. The Sheriff's Office has been assisting Cliff with updating their comprehensive school safety plan. I'd like to thank Principal Garni, Security Officer Deben Colmo for including us in their update process. I'd like to read a couple of letters. Every time we do any type of classes, we try to get some input, constructive criticism, positive or negatives, to enhance and make our trainings better. This is from the director from Cavalry Chapel, to whom it may concern. "The training that, that the staff at the Cavalry Christian Academy received on February 12th, 2021 was excellent. The training was thorough and professional. Their staff members undoubtedly were made aware of dangers not considered previously. The information along with the practical training was invaluable and greatly appreciated." I'd like to read one more, and this is from one of the teachers from Christian Academy. "Thank you for taking the time to share your acknowledged information experience with our staff here at Cavalry Christian Academy last Friday. The informational presentation was extremely eye-opening and helped me to see why this training is so helpful and important. Being a small Christian school is a blessing, though it also means that we are at risk. As a staff in school, we should be aware of possible dangers to be prepared to take action. The information presented showed that an active shooter situation can really happen at any school, especially schools in small towns. The information and the data presented also showed how vital it is for the staff to take action in an active shooter situation rather than passively sit and wait. The hands-on practice was extremely helpful. The variety of the situations and our assigned tactics also put in perspective the importance of taking action. This gave us the staff an opportunity to better assist our classrooms and formulate plans which can be protected, protect our students. Because of the training, I feel more confident in my ability to keep my students out of harm's way and feel blessed to have been given this knowledge. In the future, I hope with your help to pass this knowledge on to my students so that they too can take action to protect themselves and their classmates if the situation were to arrive." "While cases of interest that we've had, in the recent weeks, we have seen an increase of activity across the spectrum as the state and country begins a longer road to recovery for the pandemic. This coupled with the arrival of longer, warmer days of spring means this trend is likely to continue. I'd like to recognize our new district attorney, Michael Renteria, who has made strong efforts to reach out to us and other law enforcement agencies to better communications and foster a more cooperative team attitude toward a balanced approach in our mutual mission, protecting our communities, protecting our rights of all, and seeking justice. The Sheriff's Office is maintaining enhanced traffic enforcement activities DW, excuse me, DWI arrests continue. We consider DWI enforcement a priority to protect us all. In regards to community participation, the Sheriff's Office has not been able to participate in many community-based events due to the continuing pandemic situation. We are still participating in multiple organizations through virtual meetings. In the coming months, we will resume their operations at the schools reopen. The Sheriff's Office will be participating in the DEA's National Drug Takeback Day on April 24th, 2021. I plan to conduct drop-off sites in both the Mimbres and Hila Valley areas of Grant County. I believe providing outreach to these rural communities is very important. Now that Silver Schools started in our elementaries, our DARE program along with Silver Cities are going to each of the elementary schools and greeting the students as they go into their schools, and of course, our Darren the Lion is with them. In general, COVID, currently the Sheriff's Office remains COVID-free. We continue to practice preventive measures both in the office and in the field. To my knowledge, the confirmed cases with the Sheriff's Office employees have been contract traced to non-workplace exposures. Slowly more of my staff are registering to and receiving the vaccine as public confidence in its efficacy rises. We're actively participating in the COVID Joint Information Committee to ensure that information is freely flowing and transparently is maintained. Transparency, excuse me. I would like to recognize Grant County Emergency Manager Gilbert Hilton for his efforts to secure supplementary funding from the state to enhance our aging public safety radio system. We are pending receipts of $75,000 to replace multiple repeaters and make other necessary upgrades which will all benefit all county public safety agencies when completed. I would like to thank Manager Webb and the Commissioners for their support on this project. On Operation Stonegarden, Lieutenant Burns has expanded approximately $120,000 of Operation Stonegarden funds for the FY18 cycle, purchasing two fully-equipped vehicles and 18 state-of-the-art handheld radios for the Sheriff's Office. FY18 will be terminated when the invoices of the purchases are paid by the state in coming months. We are currently operating the FY19 and plans to request, I'm sorry, Lieutenant Burns has ordered one vehicle, although there are significant delays to COVID, and plans to request a budget adjustment to this cycle to purchase another vehicle and more.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Commissioners. I'd like to start with just a summary for the month of February at the sheriff's office. In regards to training, the sheriff's office continues to seek advanced training in Crisis Intervention, CIT, including peer-to-peer interacting with persons with mental health issues, general intervention with members of the public, resource referrals, hostage critical incident negotiations. We hope to develop a comprehensive framework in coming months for your consideration. Having the trained personnel in place with support resources prior to a rollout is imperative. We have made good progress. Sheriff's Office is currently planning the state-mandated in-house biannual training plan for the current cycle, a two-year cycle. We will be introducing the CIT to this training. Although not required by the state, I feel it is utmost importance for our entire staff. Corporal Jesus Palacio recently provided an active shooter critical incident training for Cavalry Christian Academy, in which the staff were given current and relevant instructions on the subject. They also participated in several senior-based exercises. Corporal Palacio is currently planning similar training at the request of Cliff Schools. The sheriff's office has been assisting Cliff with updating their comprehensive school safety plan. I'd like to thank Principal Garni, Security Officer Deben Colmo, for including us in their update process. I'd like to read a couple of letters. Every time we do any type of classes, we try to get some input, constructive criticism, positive or negatives, to enhance and make our trainings better. This is from the director from Cavalry Chapel, to whom it may concern. The training that the staff at the Cavalry Christian Academy received on February 12th, 2021 was excellent. The training was thorough and professional. Their staff members undoubtedly were made aware of dangers not considered previously. The information along with the practical training was invaluable and greatly appreciated. I'd like to read one more. This is from one of the teachers from Christian Academy. Thank you for taking the time to share your acknowledged information experience with our staff here at Cavalry Christian Academy last Friday. The informational presentation was extremely eye-opening and helped me to see why this training is so helpful and important. Being a small Christian school is a blessing, though it also means that we are at risk. As a staff in school, we should be aware of possible dangers to be prepared to take action. The information presented showed that an active shooter situation can really happen at any school, especially schools in small towns. The information and the data presented also showed how vital it is for the staff to take action in an active shooter situation rather than passively sit and wait. The hands-on practice was extremely helpful. The variety of the situations and our assigned tactics also put in perspective the importance of taking action. This gave us the staff an opportunity to better assist our classrooms and formulate plans which can be protected, protect our students. Because of the training, I feel more confident in my ability to keep my students out of harm's way and feel blessed to have been given this knowledge. In the future, I hope with your help, to pass this knowledge on to my students so that they too can take action to protect themselves and their classmates if the situation were to arrive. Our cases of interest that we've had, in the recent weeks, we have seen an increase of activity across the spectrum as the state and country begins a longer road to recovery for the pandemic. This coupled with the arrival of longer, warmer days of spring means this trend is likely to continue. I'd like to recognize our new district attorney, Michael Renteria, who has made strong efforts to reach out to us and other law enforcement agencies to better communications and foster a more cooperative team attitude toward a balanced approach in our mutual mission, protecting our communities, protecting our rights of all, and seeking justice. The sheriff's office is maintaining enhanced traffic enforcement activities, DWI arrests continue. We consider DWI enforcement a priority to protect us all. In regards to community participation, the sheriff's office has not been able to participate in many community-based events due to the continuing pandemic situation. We are still participating in multiple organizations through virtual meetings. In the coming months, we will resume their operations at the schools reopen. The sheriff's office will be participating in the DEA's National Drug Takeback Day on April 24th, 2021. I plan to conduct drop-off sites in both Amíbrus and Gila Valley areas of Grant County. I believe providing outreach to these rural communities is very important. Now that Silver Schools started in our elementarys, our DARE program along with Silver Cities are going to each of the elementary schools and greeting the students as they go into their schools. And of course, our Darren the Lion is with them. In general, COVID, currently the sheriff's office remains COVID-free. We continue to practice preventive measures both in the office and in the field. To my knowledge, the confirmed cases with the sheriff's office employees have been contract traced to non-workplace exposures. Slowly, more of my staff are registering to and receiving the vaccine as public confidence in its efficacy rises. We're actively participating in the COVID Joint Information Committee to ensure that information is freely flowing and transparently is maintained. Transparency, excuse me. I would like to recognize Grant County Emergency Manager Gilbert Helton for his efforts to secure supplementary funding from the state to enhance our aging public safety radio system. We are pending receipts of $75,000 to replace multiple repeaters and make other necessary upgrades which will all benefit all county public safety agencies when completed. I would like to thank Manager Webb and the commissioners for their support on this project. On Operation Stone Garden, Lieutenant Burns has expanded approximately $120,000 of Operation Stone Garden funds for the FY18 cycle, purchasing two fully-equipped vehicles and 18 state-of-the-art handheld radios for the sheriff's office. FY18 will be terminated when the invoices of the purchases are paid by the state in coming months. We are currently operating the FY19 and plans to request, I'm sorry, Lieutenant Burns has ordered one vehicle, although there are significant delays to COVID, and plans to request a budget adjustment to this cycle to purchase another vehicle and more radio equipment prior to the closure of this cycle in December 2021. We currently have a sub-grant agreement for the FY20 cycle for approximately $272,000, which includes two fully-equipped patrol units in addition to overtime fringes and fuel mileage allowances. Lieutenant Burns has submitted our FY2021 funding request for approximately $280,000. That will include two fully-equipped patrol vehicles, radio equipment, binoculars. And Operation Stone Garden is a complex program. However, if managed effectively, can provide the sheriff's office with resources which would not otherwise be financially practical. Lieutenant Burns and Gilbert Helton have applied for the New Mexico DPS CSFT Phase II program funding, which is a long-term COVID relief for law enforcement in the amount of $81,000 to purchase 28 hardened laptop computers. These funded would replace equipment we currently have that is 10 years old and at the end of life service. We should receive notification on whether these funds are approved in late March, early April. My command staff are currently completing background investigations on three certifiable applicants, which are currently attending Western New Mexico Academy for two open positions. In regards to our stats, I'd like to first start with the hardest stats for February 2021. Three vehicle search warrants, three separate county-wide impact operations, arresting suspects, narcotic violation warrants, one and one-half ounces of methamphetamine, one gram with heroin, 20 grams of marijuana, one seized firearm, and four arrests who related to narcotic investigations. In our civil division, for the month of February, they had 21 DVOs that were served, notices were 33, subpoenas 141, summons 38, writs six. In total, mileage outside of the county on transports was 3,759 miles. There we go. In the all-general part, I did give you a copy of our calls of service for the month of February. Our dispatch calls for the month of February were 407 calls, self-initiated 931, for a total of 1,338 calls of service for February. And it has a breakdown of the hours, dates, and shows the highest activity of what we have, which right now we're looking at on Fridays at 17.2% at 230 calls. Some of the stats that I'd like to bring up, for the month of February, we had four stolen motor vehicles. Agency assists, we had 15, and 10 self-initiated. We had 37 animal calls and one self-initiated. Dog bites, we had two. Drugging while intoxicated, we had three arrests. Incident reports that were generated for the month of February were 65 through dispatch, self-initiated were 25. Accident reports were 15 through dispatch, one self-initiated. And blotter reports were 373, and self-initiated were 158 blotter reports. That concludes my report. I stand for questions.
Thank you, Sheriff. Mr. Salas.
Sheriff, in regards to Stone Garden, those are hours that are put in outside working hours?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair Commissioner Salas, those are overtime hours that are, guys are working after their shift or before their shift or on their days off.
So how far is from Grant County? How far from Silver City, the patrol area that you guys do?
Well, our Operation Stone Garden is set up for either US Highway 180 West up to Mill Creek and State Road 78 to the Arizona border. The other sector is 180 East. And of course, we are cross-commissioned into Luna County. We also have Interstate 10, which is from the 55-mile marker to about the 32-mile marker on Interstate 10. We have State Highway 146 that leads to Achita, State Road 113, and Highway 9, which is all in the Achita corridor going into Antelope Wells in Mexico. So we'll work all the way up to Antelope Wells, which were commissioned through Hidalgo County.
Okay. And then the payroll, the funding, is that something that is run through the county? And it's just funded through Stone Garden?
That's correct. Pretty much a process our deputies want to go down, have what they call a DARs. It has everything from mileage and the dates of their going and all their activity. Part of it goes back to Border Patrol, to CBP. The other part goes to our finance, and they take care of the funding from there.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Brown?
Just one quick one, Sheriff. Thanks for the report. When you purchase a new vehicle, how many years of service life do you expect to get out of it normally?
Uh-oh.
Mr. Ponse, Commissioner Brown, that's a good question. We got some that are on a leg right now. And we're trying to replace as much as possible. I think one of the biggest problems that we had in the past, we were ordering bulk numbers of units, and they're all going out at the same time. So now we're looking at trying to buy two to three to replace the fleet. I'd say a good unit lasting, I mean, would be, really, depending on the mileage and stuff, four to five years. But we're talking, I know when I was on patrol, I probably averaged about 130 miles on an eight-hour shift. Our guys are now on 12-hour shifts and going into Stone Garden. Our miles really go up pretty quickly. We have an awesome fleet manager in the road department because they keep our wheels going. And without them, I mean, we'd be hurting, so.
Okay, so maybe roughly five years or so. I think the other piece that prompted me to ask this, you answered also by saying, "A lot are going out now, and that's why we're seeing a crunch."
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Edwards?
So I have a follow-up question to that. How many cars do you have in the fleet?
I'm not sure exactly how much on the whole fleet. I mean, every deputy, certified deputy, has a unit plus administration. Our budget on certified is 39, and we have about five extra units that are pool units.
So around 45?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so of those 45, can you, so five-year life, you're replacing them two or three at a time. How many of your units right now are relatively new? And how many are on their last legs?
Well, actually, I've had Lieutenant Burns, and he's actually making a graph, and he's met with Manager Webb on giving colors of what our unit is. And if it's okay with you, I'll present that on the next commission. I'll give you an accurate report on that.
Just me real quick, just thank your administration on that email that you sent, that I sent to you concerning citizens complaint. Thank you administration for their response. They responded promptly to the email with some ideas as to what they were gonna do. So tell them, I really appreciate it. I sent them an email back, but, you know, I think it's, and I think they're lieutenants now, Castillo, Rodriguez, and Burns.
Yes, sir.
Tell them thank you for me, and I appreciate what they're doing.
I will. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions? Is that it, Sheriff?
Yes, it is. Thank you. You'll have a reading.
Madam Clerk?
No requests.
No requests. And our treasurer, Mr. Khan.
Good morning, Chairman Ponse, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to stand before you today. In the treasurer's office, it's quite great. The energy's good. It's always good to see the taxpayers that make an appointment to come in and pay their taxes, or they just stop just to say hi and to see how I'm doing in the office. So that's great. We are starting to prepare for our second half of the collections domain of property taxes. So I'm anxiously waiting for May to come. My staff in the treasurer's office has adapted well with the transition of new leadership in the office. They have worked hard during a very challenging period with COVID being closed and getting used to Lorraine and I. I foresee great results for the end of the first quarter. We are certainly in a challenging interest rate environment right now. I've talked to our investment advisor. Rates are a little low. Right now, we have a rock star portfolio, which, hopefully, getting with you on a couple of weeks on the work session on the investment policy. Working forward on getting the, adopting the investment profile, which is still making us a solid return. With that, I'm proposing an investment. All right, I lost my place here. Adopted. Sorry about that. I went, I'm just so excited with this. I just wanna, with the proposed investment policy being adopted and hopefully adopted by you, the commission, we will explore ways to maximize deal while protecting taxpayer dollars. I'm also looking at putting in an advisory committee so it just, we have transparency within the commission and the taxpayers of Grant County. I look forward to presenting the proposed investment policy with you all. The little grants into the policy goes to protect public funds in a way to provide safety principle and liquidity of the portfolio and achieves a maximized rate of return. With the addition of the advisory interest committee, this will help with the transparency, like I said, with the commission and the taxpayers of Grant County. My plans to, with the investment advisor, I'm working very closely with the policy and creating a report to you all to quarterly go over with once our proposed advisory investment committee is hopefully commenced with the proposed investment policy. We could strongly give you all that information, proposed within the policy. I'm also looking with Tyler because we have statistics of graphs and so forth that I can present to you with actual figures as just what's been presented to you before to show the results of what's being paid in tax dollars to the county. Right now, what I did put before you was a, just a synopsis that has been collected from the last report from February 9th to March 9th, end of business day. We've collected a total of 64.71% in taxes. Collected a total of $4,107,848.12, outstanding $2,243,573.38. That's pretty much what I have right now. Stand for any questions.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I look forward to talking with you guys in a couple of weeks.
All right. Moving on to, is that it for reports? Moving on to the next item on the agenda is approval of minutes.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve the minutes for February 9th work session, February 11th regular meeting, February 23rd special meeting, February 23rd work session minutes.
I'll second the motion.
You have a second by Commissioner Brown. Discussion?
I do have one item that I raised on Tuesday, and now Melissa Khan, you're here. I apologize. I should have let you know I was gonna ask this if I neglected to do that. There was a resolution, the title of which was that we opposed HB 4 in the legislature. And during our discussion, we changed that. And Commissioner Edwards kindly drafted a new text and a new title. What is shown in the minutes of the meeting on the 11th is that we approved the resolution with amendments. So it's accurate. But the title that's shown is the old title. And my question is, wouldn't it be appropriate to have the title that we approved rather than the old title that we changed?
Chairman Ponse, Commissioner Brown? Yes, sir. The actual title is "We Don't," those are pre-done. So what we are to do is either do whatever motion was done and the outcome. So it is correct as far as it was approved with amendments. We can definitely go in and add, we can't change the title because we don't do the actual template for that, but we can go ahead and input, you know, the amendment with the change on there. That is absolutely not a problem. We can do that. Normally, like I said, you know, we just do action. That's what, we did it, and it was amendment. So that's what the minutes will reflect. But again, too, also, at any time, I'd like to, you know, I'm in the office eight to five, Monday through Friday. You've got my email, you've got my phone number. You know, call me anytime. I would have been more than happy to have that put onto these so that we could have it signed and ready to go. So what we'll do is I'll have Connie go ahead and amend it for you, and then that way we can have it signed. But, you know, I'm available at any time. So, you know, beforehand, we can get it taken care of.
And I do apologize. I know you're available. I have only the excuse that we all have of being busy. I should have done that. Well, would you mind amending your motion, Commissioner Edwards, to approve these minutes with the amendment that the clerk has just offered to make?
So, Mr. Chair, I will amend my motion to include the changes the clerk has just agreed to make.
Thank you. I amend my second.
Okay. Do we have any discussion? See none of those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Do you need to read that thing? Yeah, you know, it's on my second page, but. Here are item F, which is concerning the meetings.
What resolution was it?
Pursuant to NMSA 1978, Section 10-15-1H2, the minutes of the present opening meeting will reflect that for March 1st, 2021 meeting, the matters discussed were limited only to those specified in the notice of that closed meeting. Thank you. Moving on to financial reports, item G, consideration of March 4th, 2021 expenditure report.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve the March 4th expenditure report.
Second, Mr. Chair. You have a second by Commissioner Salas. Do we have discussion? See none of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to new business. Consideration of the 2020 Volunteer Firefighters Annual Reporting for PERA.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve the 2020 Volunteer Firefighters Annual Reporting for PERA for Cliff Gila, Fort Bear, Laura Mimbres, Pinos Altos, Santa Rita, Sapiro Creek, Tyrone, and Whiskey Creek.
Second, the motion? Second by Commissioner Brown. Discussion? See none of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item I, consideration of Santa Rita Volunteer Fire Department 2018 and 2019 Adjusted Qualification Report for PERA Service Credits for Member Laura Embreed.
Mr. Chair, I'll move we approve the adjusted qualification report for Laura Embreed.
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Edwards. Discussion? See none of those in favor?
Aye.
Item J, consideration of amendment of the Grant County Substance Abuse and Addiction Treatment Center to CASA Advisory Board Charter.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the amendment to the Grant County Substance Abuse and Addiction Treatment Center Advisory Board Charter. Second.
Second by Commissioner Billings. Discussion? See none of those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item K, consideration of New Mexico County's Wildfires Risk Reduction Program for Rural Communities, 2021 and 2022 Application for Funding.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the New Mexico County's Wildfire Risk Reduction Program. program.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Second by Commissioner Salas. Discussion? See none of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Under item L, consideration of law enforcement protection fund application.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve law enforcement protection fund application.
Second?
Second by Commissioner Brown. Discussion? See none of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion carries. Item M, consideration of Grant County Health Council Steering Committee appointments.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the appointments to the Grant County Community Health Council as presented today in our agenda. Karen Whitlock, Cindy Martinez, Jeff Fell, and Steve Chavira.
I'll second that.
Do we have a second by Commissioner Edwards? See none of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to item N, consideration of transfer of property located at 805 Tomfoyle Boulevard, Baird, New Mexico, to the city of Baird.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the transfer of 805 Tomfoyle Boulevard to the city of Baird.
Second, the motion.
Second, the motion. Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Brown. What I wanted to discuss is there's some contingencies here, and I was gonna make a motion with the contingencies because what we need to do just under discussion, discuss is, we need to make sure that, what I'd like to see is that, you know, we take this to the governing board of Hila Regional Medical Center, the proper paperwork is, is, you know, that we get the proper paperwork and everything, and that we can get with the Baird to see, to fill out some paperwork as far as the future use of it, to, to be able to complete this. And if all that goes through, then, you know, I think we could, you know, have it move forward, and if at any time, we can come back on it.
Mr. Chair, is there, is there not already a resolution from the Baird City Council to accept this property?
The only thing I've had is just basically a verbal that they will, but because of the processes that we have to transfer property, in whatever New Mexico agency, they need to know what they propose the future use to be, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct. So this, the packet of information that must go to the State Board of Finance, one of the questions asked is what is the intended use of the property? And it would be helpful to have those documents that he just referenced from everyone who's involved in the property to make sure that we have a complete packet before we submit that to State Board of Finance.
I will happily withdraw my second.
Mr. Chair, point of clarification, presenting it to the GRMC governing board, is that just for information? Or does that have to be any kind of approval by that governing board, seeing as a property belongs to Grant County?
Well, that would be more information. Sharnine, can you talk to it about, about it a little?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My recommendation would be maybe a resolution from the GRMC board supporting the donation of the property to the city of Baird. Then it's showing that you have support. It doesn't necessarily require approval, but I think it would be helpful.
So would you like to amend your motion?
I will amend my motion.
Or do you want me to make it?
You know what? In, in the interest of clarity, I will, I will bring my motion back. I will.
You will withdraw your motion?
I will withdraw my motion.
Okay, so now, now let me try it. So I make a motion to consider the transfer of property located at 805 Tomfoyle Boulevard, Baird, New Mexico, to the city of Baird, with the contingency that we take this to the governing board of Hila Regional for a resolution, and that the proper paperwork is filed, and that we get with the city of Baird to see what the future use is for the transfer of property. Is that good?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Second by Commissioner Salas. Any further discussion? See no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thanks for making that happen, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, guys. Going on to, going on to agreements under O is consideration of agreement NA-21-03, Department of Finance Administration Fund 89200, capital appropriation project.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve this agreement to receive money to fund our Trails and Open Space Master Plan development.
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Edwards. See none of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to item P, I'm just gonna go, consideration of agreement number A-21-04.
I was taking a break here.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve agreement number A-21-04 memorandum, and that will be between Grant County and KWTHA EMLLC.
And do we need to specify in the motion that we are also agreeing to amend the easements, restrictions, and covenants on this deed?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the MOU states all of that.
In that case, I second the motion.
Okay, second by Commissioner Brown. Discussion?
I look forward to this development. That corner needs something, so it's good.
I went and looked at it yesterday.
Hopefully a coffee shop? Because I sure need a coffee right now.
Hopefully a coffee shop that puts a little alcohol in the coffee. They seem to suggest that certain coffee shops do that.
Yeah. Any further discussion?
I'd just like the record to show that, well, I'm not gonna oppose this, do this. I'm not wildly happy about the fact that we're front-ending the alcohol piece. Just like the record to show that.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I apologize to the commission, but in my absence on Tuesday, may I ask, could someone, where did this come from? Could someone ask, ask if you can answer a few questions?
Our county manager looks eager to answer those.
Could you give me the quickest rundown possible?
Commissioner Billings, we were approached by this group. They are working with, developing the property. They have a buyer and the seller for the core of property located adjacent to our conference center for development of a potential coffee shop. And so they have requested that we amend some covenants that would allow that type of development. The alcohol part that Commissioner Edwards has expressed her concern over is, in the event that the development of a coffee shop does not, does not come to fruition, that it gives them the option to look at another type of QSR that might serve like beer and wine. So an example he gave was Taco Bell, and some communities now serves beer and wine. So they are trying to develop that property to sell it, and this is just a requirement to be able to amend the covenants and make it palatable.
Okay. Yeah, when I read it, it looked like they were gonna put alcohol in their coffee to me, too, so.
Well, they actually mentioned that the national coffee shop chain that they're talking about, which has so far remained unnamed, but is likely to be a Starbucks, is that they are actually test marketing serving alcohol in Starbucks.
Okay.
And I would just say that, you know, I have reservations about the fact that we're so eager to make alcohol a part of our social fabric.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You know, I'm hoping it is a Starbucks. Maybe my daughter will move back from Arizona. Also, I need to send her a text. It might be a few years, but anyway, any further discussion? See none of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item Q, consideration of agreement number A-21-05.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve agreement number A-21-05, New Mexico State Homeland Security Grant Program sub-agreement EMW 2020 SS 00127-SO1.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brown. See none of those in favor?
Aye.
So moving on to item R, it's approval of county manager's signature on agreement number A-21-06.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve the county manager's signature on agreement number A-21-06.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Salas. Discussion?
In case the public wonders, we're approving your signature on agreement to fund new repeaters. Is my memory correct, I have one?
Mr. Brown, that was the.
That was the other one.
That was one previous. This is for FEMA funding for vaccination programs.
Thank you for the reminder. It wasn't just for the public, it was for me.
Yes, and the county manager had spoken to me about it, signed it, and that's why we're now accepting our signature. So any further discussion? Did we, we had a motion and a second, right? Wow, okay.
It all happens fast.
Yeah. So any further discussion? See none of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Commissioner Billings? Was that, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Yes, aye.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I didn't know.
So moving on to resolutions, consideration of resolution number R-21-16, be the 2021 Grant County maintained roads?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the resolution R-21-16, 2021, for the Grant County maintained roads.
Second, the motion.
Second by Commissioner Brown. Discussion? Now, believe we had, what, 690 miles?
Yeah, it's gone, it's gone down 10 miles since I've been here.
Any further discussion? See none of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. So moving on to item T, consideration of, let me see, yeah, I'm on the right one. Consideration of resolution number R-21-17.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number R-21-17, the resolution authorizing submission of an application for airport aid to the New Mexico Department of Transportation for the design and bidding phases of future development of six tea hangars.
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Billings. See none of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item U, consideration of resolution number R-21-18. Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We discussed this at quite some length on Tuesday, so I don't intend to recapitulate that discussion. I would like to read three paragraphs that I have added to the resolution based on the discussion that we had on Tuesday. I believe these address concerns that were raised. I slipped this text to Taysha, who has now distributed that in print. She didn't know where I intended to insert these, and I don't think it matters that much, so let's just leave it where it is. There's a new whereas, that's at the end of the whereas's section, that says, whereas communities across the four county region face significant challenges to the sustainability of their water supplies, such as those currently facing the towns of Hurley and Hanover in Grant County. So that additional whereas identifies specific communities here that I believe that everybody on the commission wants to see have their water problems addressed. And I'm adding, requesting that we add two paragraphs to the now therefore section, and they have, again, been placed at the end. So it says, the Board of County Commissioners of Grant County hereby, and then we would skip down to requests, the Water Trust Board adopt a process for evaluating proposals from the Southwest Water Planning Region that simplifies the application process and ensures an equitable distribution of funding among the region's four counties and across the many types of water users in the region, and requests Governor Michelle Leongrisian consider appointing qualified candidates from the Southwest Water Planning Region when making appointments to the Water Trust Board. You will note that I went with timid language of requesting rather than demanding, as we had discussed. I think this is a more appropriate tone for resolution from the county. So I hope that those address the issues that were raised, and if not, I'm certainly open to considering additional changes to the language. I would like to make just a couple of other notes before we enter general discussion. A number of the members of public who spoke earlier today thanked me for my work on this, and I think that's just because they're not aware of the work that all of us do on this. And I want to thank the rest of you for the work that has been done on this. It's been a steep learning curve for all of us, particularly about the Water Trust Board, how it works, who's on it. I really appreciate how much research I know all the rest of you have done to figure out what makes most sense for our region in this case. And I want to say I appreciate the work that Commissioner Billings has done as our representative to the cap entity. You take your job very seriously. I appreciate how you've run the meeting since you've been chair of that group, so I wanted to thank you specifically for that. And I want to, one note, I think on Tuesday, and in fact frequently, we all say we wish that politics could be kept out of certain things. We also all say we wish red tape could be reduced, and I think both of those are good instincts to have, but they're unrealistic, and I think we all know that. And I want to point out one piece of politics that's very clear in my head related to this resolution and HB 200. I think all of us view a flaw in the Water Trust Board as being that it does not have representatives from this region. All of us would like the Water Trust Board to have representatives from this region, and we are entirely dependent, the way it's currently structured, on the governor for those appointments. I think the governor will take our request to name one or more candidates from this region to that board if we are on record as supporting this bill, and that's just politics. I think if we oppose it, we are somewhat hypocritical to then go later and say, hey, we didn't like this change, but we think we should appoint someone from this area. I think we're in a better position to do that, and we have a better chance of success if we support this resolution. So as much as I might in theory like to keep politics out, I do believe that this is a place where it's just a reality, and we have to consider it. That's all I have to say today. Thank you all very much.
So we still need a motion to discuss, in order to discuss.
Right, that's what I was about to say.
I apologize.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve resolution number R-21-18.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Edwards. We have a second by Commissioner Brown. Discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Salas.
You know, this is, this is a very sensitive issue, and I know we've all, all really put a lot of thought and energy into this subject. You know, I agree that, for whatever reason, the cap entity has not been able to overcome any obstacles that they have, whether they're organizational, political, or whatever. The, the truth is, the fruition of, of funding things just has not worked. It's also my belief that the House Bill 200 will pass. You know, whether, whatever we decide to do, it will pass. So I think this is the opportune time. So, I think this is the opportune time to try to, how should I put it? To ask for things that we deem necessary in the bill to create some kind of representation for Southwest New Mexico here. I've also had some communication saying that this is very possible, and I've also had some communication saying that we, if the passage of this bill goes through, we will probably get some kind of assistance to navigate the, the red tape, the applications and all that, to be able to timely, uh, get some appropriations from, from the unit fund. So, for that reason, you know, I, I feel comfortable with it.
You know, and I wanted to say that, you know, and I thank Commissioner Billings for, for reading the letter from the city manager, Deming Aaron. You know, in, in this letter, you know, I agree with, with some of the concerns that the city manager had there. You know, one of them that, you know, legislation would remove regional and local representation from New Mexico. That's, you know, one of the things that, that I had discussions over, and, you know, just to let him know, you know, the other part to his letter here, and I'm not going to go through the whole, whole piece, is, you know, that their city hires consultants, and, you know, that costs money to hire consultants. So, doing research and having conversations with, with senators, representative, and, and other folks trying to look at this, you know, that's why I sort of proposed putting that Grant County would recommend that new policy be developed to simplify the application process for the applicants in the Southwest region. The also, the other thing that, that I wanted to see on here is, Grant County recommends a need for technical assistance for these eligible entities in the Southwest region. And Grant County recommends representation from Southwest region on the Water Trust Board because of some of these concerns, and, and talking to some of these people and doing some research, you know, it seemed like everyone had the same concerns. Lot of the concerns were about the representation for Southwest New Mexico, you know, is there money? You know, my understanding is that there's possibly money going into this bill to try to assist with some type of assistance to help communities. You know, one that comes to mind, I mean, for a county, you know, when they send applications and they do certain things, it's hard enough for us having the resources to fill out some of this paperwork and having many individuals, but you get into communities like Hanover, you know, Tyrone, do they have the resources to be able to go after some of these projects and, and the support? So, this is why I've sort of recommended these pieces go in there, because we just don't want to sit here as Grant County stating because we do have more resources than, than some of these other communities. You know, I would hope that Governor, our Governor, if she does appoint somebody, that it's somebody neutral, that looks at the different avenues, looks at agriculture, looks at, you know, the other areas of this, you know. You know, one of the biggest things, and I just, and I didn't read it, but I just saw in the newspaper, just passing by the, the front there, that, you know, Hurley's building its, or, or starting on its third well. You know, it's sort of disheartening for me to sit here and not advocate for some of these communities in Grant County, because, you know, here we have, here we are, and I've mentioned this before, we probably have different viewers now, or some new viewers, I mentioned, it's sort of disheartening that in twenty twenty-one, Hurley does not have their own water supply. And, you know, I look at Hanover, you know, I know Tyrone's starting to have issues. I look at, you know, Santa Clara, all these communities that either, and to me, the easiest one to say is, they would either like to replace pumps, update pumps, do certain things to have their infrastructure work to provide water for their citizens, you know. But, I also have to look on the other side of this, is there's more than just those communities, like, and like I've stated before, you know, our agriculture, you know, our farms, our ranches, you know, we have to also hopefully support them in trying to get some of these waters as, as they can, you know, through, through this HB twenty, and, and that's why representation to me is so important from this area, so they can listen to their needs and, and their wants, to be able to come up with solutions. There's so much into this, I cannot speak for Katron County, for Hidalgo, or for Deming, like I've stated before. I don't know what their needs are, you know. I do know what Grant County and, and the communities in Grant County, what they do need. You know, I also, and, and I'm not going to look, look up, but, you know, looking at, what made me feel a little more comfortable too, was an email that I received where it shows that the Water, Water Trust Board has already given a lot of these communities some of this money to start on these projects. And I'm not going to get into the, the numbers and, and the amounts, because I don't know how accurate they are, but they have done something to be able to help some of these communities, and I hope it continues to help these communities.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Billings.
With permission, can I distribute some papers, and I promise I won't, I, I think I see where this is headed, so I won't waste a lot of your time, but I'd like to give some information out, and then have a quick discussion, if that's okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Billings, do you mind if I say something while you're passing those out?
No, please do.
So, we've talked a lot about the importance of the varied kind of water users we have in the region, and I think language is critically important in this document, and I'd like to suggest that instead of saying across the many types of water users in the region, that we actually specify that their county, from everything from counties and municipalities to volunteer-run water associations, to clarify what we really mean by many types.
Which range from...
Counties and municipalities to volunteer-run water associations. Now, water is imperfect there, I'm thinking of irrigation associations, ditch associations, Hanover, you know, Pinos Altos, and so water was the generic word that I came up with.
Well, since it's already water users, perhaps it could say volunteer-run associations.
That's fine. But I, I think it's important to clarify that more than just saying many types of users.
I'd be in favor of that, I'd hope it would include irrigators, farmers.
To volunteer-run irrigation and...
Water associations.
And water associations, something like that? Or just to volunteer-run irrigation associations, and we know that the others are part of the, the range?
Yeah, irrigation associations is fine, yeah.
Well, I think the Hanover Water Association is volunteer-run, right?
Yeah, but we're not listing every single kind, is my...
No, 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 I'm just saying wa, water and irrigation.
Okay.
Is what, or irrigation and water, whatever.
And...
Thanks for giving me that opportunity, Mr. Billings.
Thank you. So, in this handout, I just, real briefly, wanted to, the, the first item in there is analysis of the bill by the Office of the State Engineer, the Interstate Stream Commission, Rolfe Schmidt Peterson is the executive director of that organization. Just want to point out that, uh, and I was going to try to go over this in some detail, but just wanted to point out that basically they're not in favor of HB two hundred for the various reasons listed there. If you go to page, the fourth page of that document where it has a three at the top, he talks about how the New Mexico Interstate Stream Commission's been working with the New Mexico cap entity on a new path, and I'd like to point out to the commission that while all members of the New Mexico cap entity are not on board with the fact that the diversion project is, that there is no diversion project, the Interstate Stream, Stream Commission makes that clear here, and the majority of the members, by far the majority of the members of the cap entity, understand there's no diversion project, and that this money's got to be spent on non-unit projects. There's, the Interstate Stream, Stream Commission is talking in those round circles near the top of page three, talking about Hurley Water Project, so they're talking about three different projects that they're working on, supporting with the cap, with, and working with the cap entity, started the Hurley Water Project, the push-up diversion dams in the Gila Valley, which there's three of those, and just want to point that out, that the nature conservancies in, in favor and working with at least one of those dam projects. And then also the Verd Valley Farmers Potential, uh, well, I'll just point that out to their, to you, sorry, I'm kind of rambling. And then the other, the next one is the New Mexico cap entity's reasons for opposing HB two hundred. I think we've heard all of this, so I won't belabor that. The third, the third is from the New Mexico cap entity's attorney, Pete Minnichi, talking about whether HB two hundred is legal because of the supremacy clause of the US Constitution, whether it's legal, and because it's a federal act. I'll let you read that on your own, if you'd like to. It, it actually agrees with the analysis by the Interstate Stream Commission attorney that there could be potential lawsuits by interested parties if this passes, if HB two hundred passes. But what I'd really like to speak to is the state Water Trust Board issues, and I appreciate the added language to the resolution that Commissioner Brown has proposed. I don't think, I don't think there's maybe one of those whereas's, all the rest of them, I think I can agree with fully. But the added language that requests that the state Water Trust Board adopt a process for evaluating proposals from the Southwest Water Planning Region that simplifies the application process, really appreciate that language, because what I've heard over and over again is what Mr. Sarah said, that the state Water Trust Board application process is not simple. I want to thank Senator Cyia Hemphill, who has, who stated the other evening that she's going to be working on getting monies, I think a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, is that what she said, Harry?
Yeah, I don't remember, but yes.
For, to go to the Southwest New Mexico Council of Government to help these various water users we're talking about navigate the difficulty of the state Water Trust Board. I know that one of the commenters this morning talked, quoted Priscilla Lucero, or, or indicated that Priscilla said, I just want you to know that I was in a meeting with, well, actually three different meetings with Priscilla lately, and I'm not going to quote her or say what she said, but, because I don't think that's fair. But I think it's really safe to say that she has some serious questions about the Water Trust Board process, so I'm glad to see that added, added language. I don't feel like that, I, I think I can see what the commission, the wishes of the commission are, so I won't waste your time any longer. I won't be voting for this because probably more than anything, because that language that requests a simpler process isn't in the legislation itself. And, well, I'd really like to see that language for the simplified process in the legislation. And also, you know, I hope that Governor Gershon would appoint at least two of these, I think there's two positions coming up where she could appoint, is that right?
I believe there are more.
Okay.
At least two.
At least two.
I hope she appoints someone from Southwest New Mexico regardless of HB two hundred. We're part of the state, and we need some representation from down here. Harry, can you, can you remember from the meeting the other night, Representative McQueen was on there, actually kind enough to donate over an hour of his time late in the evening, and it was so late that I can't remember what he said, he was gonna, he was gonna write a letter.
Well, he, he was gonna request a letter from Water Trust Board and the ISC, so either jointly signed letter or signed by the one person who's a member of both, I'm not sure which was the goal there, that would acknowledge the difficulties of small organizations and apply it through this, the assistance through the Water Trust Board, and express an intention to, to help those groups and/or to modify the process. He made clear it wasn't up to him to tell them what to put in the letter, but those were, those were the asks.
But he was gonna request a letter, okay, and that would be from, maybe from the state engineer, because he's a member of both the state Water Trust Board and the Interstate Stream.
That's the person I was trying to remember.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I think I've said my piece, I appreciate the commission's patience in, in hearing this out, thank you.
So, Commissioner Billings, and I under, I think I understand the, your concern about it, and, and I respect it, and I'm not trying to change your mind in any way, but, you know, you're right, the bill doesn't have that, but hopefully, we are requesting that, you know, in, in this resolution, that the Water Trust Board adopt a process for evaluating proposals from Southwest Water Planning Region that simplifies the application process. So, we're hoping that, you know, they, they listen to our request, because that's what, that was, that is one of my concerns also, like, and not only mine, but a lot of people also have that concern, so speaking to them, that's why, you know, I tried to get some of this wording in here, because, you know, you're right, that the bill doesn't have that, I'm hoping that, you know, there's further discussion and all that, but I, I'm agreeing with you on that.
Thank you. I know Senator Hemphill's heard our complaint, and she spent over an hour of her time on the phone with us the other day too, also, and Priscilla Lucero was on that call, Harry, Commissioner Brown's on there, and I think Priscilla's concerns were heard about the two-tiered process that she have to go through, she's wanting more of a colonialist-type process. I want to believe that'll, has a chance of happening, if the powers that be will push for that process. Again, I want to make clear for the members of the cap entity who appointed me to chair that entity that I'll be voting now, I question the legality of, because of the supremacy clause, and I know that's the position of, of the cap entity itself, so I wanted you to know that's why I'm voting no on this resolution. I'm actually anxious to see in the absence of a diversion project, this money start being spent wisely on some non-un, non-unit projects.
Thank you, Commissioner Billings, Commissioner Edwards.
So, I think it's important to point out that despite the fact that we don't agree on all the points, that there has been an incredible amount of work done on this to make sure that everyone's voice is heard in this process, and I just, I really appreciate that even though we may not all agree on, on the resolution or the bill, that it hasn't stopped us from making sure that everyone's voice is heard and, and acting upon the concerns of not just one side or the other. And that is actually, so I want to acknowledge that I think a lot of why that is happening is because Commissioner Billings is now the chair of the cap entity, I think that's a big part of it. I think that's a big part of it. And the other piece of it is that I think that is in direct, it's directly opposite of what has happened with the cap entity for a very long time. And it feels like we're actually making progress on an issue that feels like we haven't made progress on in a really long time. And at the risk of repeating myself again, I just, I really appreciate when we can come together in conversation and address issues that are important to everyone.
You know, we're still in discussion, and I don't know if there'll be any more, but, you know, that's one thing that I do respect Commissioner Billings for. You know, he is on that, the cap entity, and he is the Chair of that, and, you know, his members, you know, that's why they have a chair, you know, they go through the Chairman, and I respect, you know, everything you've said, and, and, you know, what you, you know, whatever you vote, I'm going to respect that. I think it's, it's, it's respect that you vote the way you do, and you do it on your own mind, and you follow what, you know, being Chair of that board. You know, one thing that, that I am sitting back on is, is I understand that that was brought up to me also, the legalities and so forth, and that's down the road, and we'll see how that goes, but, you know, I would really be disappointed if in two years, three years, we're in the same position. And I'm not speaking about the legalities or what may happen in courts, I'm thinking about, you know, if we're going to take this step and our legislators take this step, I hope there's things in motion to start working on these projects, start doling out money for design, whatever it may be, start listening to these constituents, because, you know, I don't want to, in, you know, or I can only say next March, I don't know what happens after that, but being sitting up here next March, because we're discussing that no money's coming in, and that things aren't getting done. So hopefully, it does, if it, and I think I'm, like Commissioner Salas, I think this bill's going to pass. You know, I just hope that when it passes and the governor signs it, if she does, that it just starts rolling to start helping some of our communities. Any further discussion? Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I actually had a response planned to the question about violating the supremacy clause, but it's evident to me that would also be unnecessarily taking up time, so I'm not going to. I will offer to stake my full reputation on that not being a valid legal argument. We do not have to fear a lawsuit. I'm not going to go into all the reasons that I believe that's true, just letting you know that. What I did want to say was, I want to clarify the language that we're adding, just so we can all be clear about what we're voting on. It is now the second-to-last request, and it would read, "Request the Water Trust Board adopt," excuse me, let me take my mask off, "Adopt a process for evaluating proposals from the Southwest Water Planning Region that simplifies the application process and ensures an equitable distribution of funding among the regions for counties and across the many types of water users in the region, which range from counties and municipalities to volunteer-run irrigation and water associations." Is that your understanding also?
Would you read the last little phrase, sir?
Sure. "Which range from counties and municipalities to volunteer-run irrigation and water associations."
Thank you, yes.
Thanks, Commissioner Brown.
Do you need to amend your motion to say as amended, or what?
Yes, I do. So I will amend my motion to include the change as just read by Commissioner Brown.
And I'll amend my second.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Edwards with amendment, and a second by Commissioner Brown. Further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Salas?
You know, I like to think this is, you know, I've been following the bill, I've been following where it's going, and in my estimation, it is going to pass. You know, so I think this is the opportune time to, to put amendments into the bill where it seems like our representatives in Santa Fe are receptive to do. And I think this is the opportune time, as Mr. Brown stated, to get ahead of it and put those in where there's an expectation of it being accepted. So I, again, want to thank Mr. Billings for being the Chairman of the cap, because he has added a lot of credibility to it, and I appreciate, and it takes a lot of intestinal fortitude to come here and, and present the opposite view. But so, thank you, and thank you guys.
Okay. County Manager?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Commissioner Brown, would you submit that, what you just stated to Tasha in writing, so we can make sure that we get that correct in the resolution?
Of course.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Name. Okay, motion carries.
There was a request in public comment that we indicated we did, but that was a four to one, is that, is that what that was?
Yes.
Okay, just for the public. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to next item on the agenda, Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Edwards?
I do not have anything today, thank you.
Commissioner Brown?
I have two minor things if I can remember them. One, I actually obtained clarification just now about the money that Senator Correa Hemphill suggested she would attempt to put in the budget. She's on the Senate Finance Committee, she's in a good position for doing that. She did tell us $150,000, Commissioner Billings, your memory is correct on that. What she was able to introduce just this morning turned out to be only $100,000. Hopefully, that will do the trick. Also, I'm sure that our legislators have to go through a great deal of wrangling to get anything in there, and being able to get $100,000 in is, I think, is an accomplishment. So she maybe didn't make word on every penny of her promise, but she made good on her word to try, and she got a significant amount. I also, I just wanted to note, I've heard several complaints now about the audio quality. I guess we're all hoping that we'll be back to regular meetings in person, and that will reduce the importance of the audio quality, but there are still people who can only watch, or who find it much more convenient to watch online. I feel like we could afford a better system. I've heard some of the streaming myself, and sometimes I can't even tell what I'm saying, even though I know what I said. It's pretty bad. So if there's something we can do about that, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you very much. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I already asked, did I ask you?
You did.
Okay. Commissioner Billings?
Yes, thanks. I want to acknowledge what several of you have acknowledged, and that's, I think Commissioner Edwards might have been the first one to bring it up. Knowing that I was going to vote against this resolution, you still listened to what I had to say, and actually let me be a part of amending the resolution that you knew I was going to vote against. So I appreciate you listening to that and all of my comments. And I do appreciate Senator Hemphill, when she said that she was going to try to do that. I wondered if she'd be able to pull any of that off, so I don't, you're right, there's a lot of wrangling that goes on. I probably don't appreciate half the difficulty, and hopefully that, I have full confidence in our Director of the Council of Governments here to put that money to good use and get some good assistance so that some of these projects can go forward. I think that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Salas?
Well, you know, in going through this issue, and I've had some constituents that have called me in my district, there is often great difficulty for unincorporated areas, and the Hanover Pharaoh, TNM area, the Main Base area, brings to mind some of those, you know, even the North Hurley area. So I think it's, it's hard for them to navigate, you know, the possibilities of, of some of this funding, and if it wasn't for the COG, you know, they probably wouldn't, wouldn't have any. And I know one of the concerns that a constituent just, a couple of constituents just brought to me is the possibility of any enhanced enforcement of areas that have been hit by some spots of crime, you know, so, and they asked me, well, you know, how about streetlights in Hanover or those areas? And I said, well, I really don't know, but I will ask our County Manager if there's any process or any aspect of that that can be done. But I'm hoping that also if, if it comes to fruition, that the FTE for the COG, it will be utilized, you know, and our unincorporated areas can, can have better access. One more thing I wanted to add, you know, there was great discussion on the F-16 training, and I'm of age that I knew many World War II veterans in Korea, in Vietnam, you know, Desert Storm, and the prospect of them being able to call in airstrikes was sometimes their saving grace, or else they wouldn't be here anymore. I'm, I'm very appreciative that there is still going to be continued training for what they need. You know, our areas of conflict right now, you know, will resemble the terrain that's available, you know, to policemen, you know, so I'm still very appreciative that we did not negate any possibilities of training for our pilots, because in this area, you know, we have a high percentage of veterans that have gone in, and at the, you know, right now, it's, it's the conflicts that have been going on, and usually they're in the east, so, but I'm very thankful for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. So just to talk a little bit about, I've received a few emails concerning the Wild and Scenic, and a resolution that was, you know, passed by this commission. You know, some citizens have expressed concerns over the language and the economic impact it could have on, you know, the mining, farming, ranching. When this resolution was passed by the commission, you know, I did state that I would continue to follow, follow this and see, you know, be an advocate, so all sides could be heard on this. I have stayed in communication with Senator Heinrich's office, and I know that, you know, Freeport for sure has had meetings with Senator Heinrich, and at that time, it was Senator Udall, that had some discussions over some of the language, and they were working through it. Well, during the process, Senator Udall retired, and right now, you know, I don't know for a fact, and I'm not, you know, Senator Ben Ray Luhan was elected to the US, as US Senator. I don't know where he's at, and I know there was a transition period where he was getting his staff in his group put together, and I don't know, I have not directly spoken to him about this, the Wild and Scenic. So there was a little drop-off there. I have reached out to, you know, Senator, well, I've reached out to Senator Ben Ray Luhan's staff and some other people to see if these meetings are going to continue, to start looking at, at what the effects it can have, can't have, so they can come through some agreement and see what it is. The piece to this, though, is I do understand how important, you know, the economy is to Grant County, the jobs, you know, that the mines provide, ranching and farming, they do provide jobs. I understand all that. I, one of the emails, and I love this, because, you know, you sit up here, one of the emails that I received sort of educated me a little to where it had some very valid, you know, they had valid concerns. So sometimes for, for a commissioner, it's just like what we went through, HB200. You know, you have to do research, you have to do certain things. So reading this email, you know, to me, he had some valid concerns, so I thought, you know what, I need to educate myself on, on some of the processes that the mine has. You know, everybody sometimes will assume, oh, you worked at the mine. I did, but I don't know every process, I don't know every ins and outs. I know of what I was involved in, and things may have changed since then. So I will be reaching out probably to one of the general managers to see if they can go over that process with me, so I can have some answers and look at some things. You know, again, I did say that I would look at making sure that the public had their input on Wild and Scenic, and I'm going to continue to do that. You know, I did write a letter a couple of weeks ago, you know, I do support protecting our rivers, you know, I do do that, and there may be some pieces that I need to go back and look and educate myself for educational purposes, so I can address some of this, so I can let, you know, the senators' offices know, ask these questions. At this, at this time, there's some questions that I cannot ask because I don't understand the processes, I don't understand how it would affect that process, to bring that up to them. So I, and I'm not going to mention the person on that email, but I received it this morning, I thank him for that, for that email. Again, I did say that I would look at this process, that I would work with both sides, you know, every, you know, citizens, you know, as a county commissioner, we sit here, and our job is to try to listen to as many people as we can. You know, at the end, you know, to me, I think some of, some of these concerns that were brought up to me probably would be best, and that's the first thing I was asked, is why aren't they emailing the senators, so they can start working and looking at some of this stuff? Well, you know, I would urge the public that if you do have anything or concerns or language that's in that, that, you know, that you do email some of these senators, and help me out also by emailing them, because emailing me opens my eyes to certain things, and certain things that I have to learn, certain things that I have to research, certain things that I have to advocate for. But at the end, you know, our senators are the ones that are going to put this document together. So I would really appreciate that some of your concerns would go to the senators, US Senator Martin Heinrich and US Senator Ben Ray Luhan. But I will continue to try to get as much input as I can that I get from the community, because, you know, our resources in this community are valuable, and they're as valuable as a river, so, you know, I just wanted to bring that up and, and say that, you know, at the end, I don't know what's going to go to Washington, I don't know what the writing's going to be, but I, and I know for sure that, you know, if both, you know, if everybody speaks and has their input to it, you know, it will be listened to. It will be listened to, and hopefully that, you know, that you do start sending some of these emails with some of these questions, because some of the questions I can't answer, some I can, some I can't, but I do appreciate the emails, especially the emails that educate me to where I have to do my job as a commissioner to learn some of this stuff. So I do appreciate it. I can't emphasize enough that I did say that I would stay on this, look at it, and hopefully people will, will start giving their input to, to the senators. And thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Two things. One, I wonder if you could ask the person who emailed you if they'd be willing to share that with others, so that we can likewise understand that perspective, or if not, maybe paraphrase what the issues are. And I'd love a follow-up, you know, if you do, if you do find more about that, we all need to stay on top of this, so.
Right, and you know what, I received it this morning, and I started reading it, and I was like, okay. So it opened- So it opened other doors for me. But what I'll do is I'll reach out to this individual, and I'm not gonna do it now or here, because, you know, you know why. But I will reach out to this individual to, to start, you know, looking at someone and see if I can, you know, do this, and, and we can go from there. But, you know, the emails that, you know, I'm, I'm a different type of individual too. You know, if you're gonna send me an email that's gonna have solutions and ideas and all that, and make me work and make me research, I love those emails. You know, and, you know, I've gotten emails, "Support Harry Brown's resolution," well, you know, okay. You know, I mean, and I don't mean to pull you out, out in the public here, but I look at it, I go, okay, I, you know, but...
I didn't solicit that.
But sometimes they have, you know, reasons as to why, and some of them that I've been getting have been some good, you know, legitimate questions that the public deserves answers on.
Yep, I agree.
Thank you. Were you gonna say anything?
No.
No? Is that it? So, thank you.
I'll make a motion that we, Chair.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.